That's just the fact of the lower tier, tier of counties, take all the counties on the lower tier. Most of them are affected that way. You know, fifty some odd states or fifty some odd counties throughout are in real similar positions as what we are. Mainly agricultural, less populated type thing, so yeah, we, I guess you gotta play the cards that you're dealt.
Well, thinking back on what Russ said, you raise the taxes, you're not gonna collect those people wanting to come to the county. If I raise the taxes, they're gonna go, shoot, I'll just like bumble the next time.
I won't argue with you, you know, that's, yeah, I see what you're saying. Not that I like it by any means.
Yeah, but and you want, you wanted to throw to like Dallas, you said this county has, what has, what, what's the incentive to bring people here or businesses here? If you raise taxes?
You know, then it comes back to what Mark said, you know, what essential services are in place? We do them because they're essential. They're written in code, we gotta do them, they're essential. What are those auxiliary or am, you know, auxiliary type of services that we do for the, the convenience aspect of, of the citizens of the county? And those things all add up, they, you know, what, which ones are people willing to do without? And that's the, that's the hard question there, what is?
Yes, I think, just so everyone's aware, can you guys explain the process leading up to you forming the budget? Because many people probably aren't aware that each department comes in and meets with you and has their own, I think you call, I don't know if you call them work sessions. I know I've attended a couple and it's very informative because then you get to hear from the department head. So people are asking, you know, what cuts can be made and that kind of thing. So those are open to the public, people can attend. Can you guys tell them the process a little bit?
Well, normally each department head comes in and gives us a budget worksheet and shows that we have a comparison of the last three years' spending and to what they spent so far that year a percentage, and then also what they are proposing and what they would like to see increased. Or even there's been numerous cases this past year, we've had decreases. And I'm personally thinking of the attorney's office right now. They're gonna do, come December next year, they're gonna do away with one of their employees because of retirement. We've had other departments that has retirement, they have not replaced, so we are taking things into account for that. Suzy had?
I did. Do you have a list available to us? What is the, the necessary and what is the?
Mandated.
What the mandated are and, and what the extra expenses would be? Do you have a list of those things?
It could be compiled out of the code as far as what.
I think it'd be interesting for us, no, can you make that list for us?
Here's another one, for example, I didn't mention. This is the conservation department. They're asking for more and more money, but we're giving them double what is required by law. Okay, what we're required by law, our levy rate for them is almost double. Do we want to do away with all the, half of our department, department and the conservation office? Some people say yes, some people say no.
So I attended a meeting that they gave and it was my impression that the money that they generate from the cabins has to go back to the county. They can't keep that for their upkeep and that sort of thing.
Correct.
Why is that? Why can they not?
Generally, basically, anyway, we, we have.
So you're complaining about their budget, but yet you're taking money from them that they could use for upkeep on their cabins?
The way the county works is different than our old personal bank accounts, okay? What we have to levy for is covering every expenditure that we have coming to us and not revenue, okay? We cannot count the revenue for the future, yep?
Right.
So we have to levy for all expenditures. Does that make sense? Yes, it will come back, yes, the revenues will come back to us and then we have for later on when we have our reserves. Then, then, then we compile what we have and we'll need to cut our levy if our reserves are greater, so we don't need all that for the future.
And Suzy, some of that expense has been offset on, like, what, a month ago or so? We allowed them to maintain the right-of-way easement fees from an electrical high line that was going through there, which was a pretty substantial chunk of change. That was allowed to stay in their coffers for their pet project, you know, rather than.
How much was that?
Fifty-four thousand, fifty-eight thousand, something like that.
Actually, it'll be more than that one.
Yeah, and that was on one right-of-way, a hundred and fifty total.
And that was just this year, this past year, in twenty-four, twenty-five?
Contracts were just signed.
Yesterday.
Probably a month ago.
Contract was signed yesterday.
So it kinda offsets that a little bit.
Chris, when you, when we talk about all different committees within the county, is it set that you always have an increase in, say, benefits to county employees every year? I mean, how is that, how is that delegated? Is that something that's proposed every year? Or do you have it set that they're, they're gonna get a cost of living, three percent, five percent, eight percent? How is that delivered? Cause I don't, I mean, sometimes your stuff comes on paper, but by the time you see it, it's already a done deal. Is that a proposed thing that you do every year or how do you set that? Cause that's gonna affect our taxes, right? Cause that's where the expenses, that's what it's all about. It's the biggest thing in Texas, the figure said increase in taxes necessary to continue those apparent services and cost of living increases. So what is that cost of living increase? Because if some of you guys are only getting three percent cost of living and you're giving five and eight percent out to the employees, kinda hard to justify that as a taxpayer, where, where is that coming from? So how's that set up?
Does anybody know what last year the county employees received for a raise, raising last year in Henry County?
Zero. Other than county employees, that's right, zero.
I do, zero, they got zero last year. Chairman, you are top, right? Okay, I guess, I guess we gotta, the way I look at it, we gotta calculate into the ability to recruit people for those jobs, the cost of training people for those jobs, and then the level of productivity that those jobs have with a new person in place. So I, I guess it's a balancing factor of all the, the cost recruitment, training, all the expense in there or give them a, a way so they stayed working here. I mean, if you were to hire, you wouldn't do it now, but if you were to hire a chiropractor, you don't wanna have to hire a new chiropractor every year or every couple of years.
I'll just tell you the last five years, they Blue Cross Medicare, we've been cutting every year, been here, well, I used to get paid for being here. And after all, what I got through last year compared to when I started thirty-two years ago, isn't a whole lot more? Medicare's and the torts and for cutting us, taking money back, Blue Cross is the same way. So I saw cuts, decrease income, had to work harder, harder to maintain my money for less. So everyone has to take your budget a little bit, I'm just wondering where that tightening's going on, cause there's taxpayers well retired now.
As I was mentioning, a little buy-in from the employees on their insurance will be taken place the next year. Yeah, I mean, they're, we call it, call it sniping people from other, other counties will snipe people from us, Henry County. The state of Iowa will snipe people from county employment because they offer a higher wage and everything like that. So, you know, it's kind of a juggle balancing factor in there that, right, wrong, or indifferent. I mean, we, we come up with a figure, yeah, this year we, we come up with a, a five percent increase because last year we got none. And the year before that, was it two percent? At the dollar an hour raise last, the year before that. So this, this year we come up with a five percent raise.
To go off of what Chad is just saying, you know, we hired our HR person to do a study for us comparing what the public sector and the private sector, comparison wages and job descriptions and things like that to show our, to show us our, our people underpaid or overpaid. With nets including benefits and everything, so we'll soon be getting that. So in the future, we, we can tell you, our people are being paid the correct amounts. So we don't have to have the, like Chad said, maybe getting, taking away from us the employees.
Like you have in every sector of employment.
Yeah.
And people always want to keep more money, better benefits.
But we, but we have to justify ourselves, are we paying the right amount to our employees?
And that study will encompass other county employees, you know, a like employee doing something very similar in another county type thing. What, what's the cost comparison there? What is the cost comparison for a road grader operator in private construction or, or for the, the road builder or something? What's the road grader operator making doing that or the truck driver? Kind of an apples to apples and oranges to oranges, it's possible to get an idea of what that market value for that job skillset is, so.
I'm surprised they had that thing going on for a long time, I mean, that's kind of a cost of work a lot of employers do so they know where they stand. But to answer your question directly, we don't use a COLA and we don't use, we kinda generally use CPI. So county employees don't get a cost of living allowance, but when we're looking at raises, we do look at the CPI. And that's what HR is looking at as well, more of a CPI.
And there was compensation board, there's a group of peers from Henry County come together for a compensation board. They do a salary analysis on their, basically let them down with a recommended pay increase for the elected officials. You know, us three, the reporter, the treasurer, the, you know, the, all the elected officials. And then we use that as a, a little bit of a balance or a standard to set from, code dictates what some of the employees make of, some of the elected officials, whatnot like that. That, that's kind of where the juggle starts, if you will.
Question in the back. Real quick, that high line project that you're talking about, which high line specifically do you know?
There's two, I mean, for our, for our bigger one, is one here, catch and switch, West Town.
You know, catch and switch, Westwood Hill, the big wall.
Right there, just right over there, there's two intersections of two high lines there. And then also the one that was across the quarry.
So does the county pay for that high line maintenance?
No, that's utility line. They pay a, an easement fee because it crosses county line, it crosses public, you know, it crosses other private property as well.
So what was the conservation part of that then?
Conservation has some land that it crosses over there. And rather than that, come back to the general fund, we diverted that right, put right into their, their coffers.
There should be public coming ground out that way, so the property, Amera 34590C property crosses that public ground out West Town.
So to follow up then, is the intention for them getting it direct so that you can reduce your contribution on your end?
That would be, just giving them that money would limit their need to ask for additional money out of the general fund.
Okay, that's.
It's kind of paying them upfront versus having them come ask money later.
And.
String of two, isn't that just a one-time payment?
Well, they get a down payment when they sign the contract and then after that, the payment comes in.
Better not be getting this money every year, right?
No.
No. It's one-time deal.
Well, you're on that department, you know what your revenue is per year for their cabin rentals and all the slots along the river and the general income and your rental? I know that includes rental on planters and cedars and all that, you know how much that is per year by chance? Last year was roughly forty thousand dollars through the board. They were down just a little bit just because of the pumping station, but if they're not significant, I think this is quite as well.
And they could slide that. To go into conservation, well, the county give them some of the A R, A R P COVID money, basically, for a project that they got on sewers. This last year, they haven't been able to have sanitary sewer system for their, their camping facilities down there. That's, that's like trying to ride a dead horse, I mean, nobody wants to go camping and not have a sewer system to plug into. So that was, we felt, pretty important project to get going. So we injected some money into that so that project can be put in place and, and move forward so that, that horse will stand up and somebody can ride on it.
But to your dollars and cents question, Ross, the ROI on that would be horrific. In dollars and cents, if you think about it, forty thousand dollars a year, maybe forty-five thousand dollars a year versus a half a million dollar investment. Well, cause I mean, I, cause I hear both sides on how it's going on that, you know, we work with them a lot through pheasants and everything else. Starting to figure out costs of expenditures and we help over again, but, and as a rule, I know they got the rentals and now they lose the rentals. So they have to figure out where they're gonna get that money from, you know, if they're gonna lose the rentals for these, and that's why it's pure mathematics. Was a year, I never ever heard the amount, and so they're in the process of doing some upgrades and looking at anything else, it takes money, yeah, so.
You know, the return on investment, yeah, it, it doesn't look great. But if you talk to any organization, the, the future planning group for Henry County, what is a, a major drawing factor for any county? And it's recreational trails, it's outside activities, things like that, so, you know, there, there's other payoffs, you know, versus just the money injected, there's, there's payoff because if, if there's not a trail, if there's not a cabin to camp in, I mean, I live three miles away and I'd go down and rent a cabin, you know, very honestly, if, if it wasn't available, that, that money would be gone.
Question in the back, I thought I saw him.
Could you tell me why the rural residents rates going up so much more than the city? I know you said that we get added benefits, I don't, I don't see the added benefits for rural people yet.
Yeah, you get that trash.
Oh.
Retirements.
Mr. Clarification, on your track, you, you, that is no taxpayer money due to the, to the vehicle ops and sales tax. Not using any levy money from the county for that.
Then why is our taxes going up at such a higher rate than the urban? Has anybody bought gravel recently, kind of gravel? Twenty some up, but done, pretty close to it.
I buy from a very good, it's cheaper.
See, that's, that's.
It's cheaper than the, it's, it's cheaper than the quarry out here. I mean, you know, they, they, they want a fortune for a truck of rock and I can hire a guy at a Donaldson and have a truck of rock rock thirty miles, charge both ways and still be out cheaper.
But the county has more lane miles of road to maintain. And road maintenance and road construction and improvement is, is an expensive endeavor there, so. And you're, you're lucky you live that close to Missouri where you take advantage of that.
The chat point, that's about thirty percent of our total, but it's just secondary roads, so it's significant, obviously. And then when you look at the sheriff, he's about twenty-one percent, so I hope that answers your question a little bit there. Those are the, the big dollar.
Do we ever think about doing anything differently with them roads? Cause it's not gonna get cheaper. Well, I don't wanna be cynical or say anything, we get complaints about the gravel roads, but the cheapest road we have to maintain is dirt. You know, I'm being honest, and a pavement is the most expensive in the long range, you take the whole life of it. So I, I don't, I mean, it's what services do we want?
Out the roads. And I do a lot of countryside, moving around the countryside. I like to get out on a motorcycle and just ride gravel roads and dinoys and things like that. And you can say what you want, but I've done it for years and Henry County has some of the better roads than the county. And you go to, you go to some of the other counties and like holy smokes, am I gonna get through here? You know, that type thing, so I, I guess the roads that we have are pretty decent comparative speaking. Are they perfect enough?
Real quick, right here. Yeah, I was on a gravel road too, and I've had it sprayed the last two years, really keeps the dust down. All of a sudden this year, the company that sprays my road sent me a letter like they always do, but they said this year the county is charging twenty-five extra dollars. That because, okay, when the grader comes by my house, it lifts the blade, it doesn't grate, so it's saving wear and tear on equipment and diesel fuel. So I, I'm getting charged more.
I can answer that one. Calcium chloride on roads, it breaks down the rock, and you gotta put more rock on the roads to cover the calcium chloride.
That's a good answer, thank you, but why all of a sudden, has it happened when people have been spraying roads for decades?
Because we, we're trying to cut the cost, you wanna know the truth, for the county. And that is something that is not essential for a county resident, you choose to have that done. The county maintainer has to come and grade that specifically. He might have to deadhead to all these spots to get to all these places that are only receive calcium chloride or whatever dust control they want ahead of time. They are not out there doing their normal maintenance, they'd have to take special time to go do this for everybody. So it's not cost effective for us to have them go do that. So we decided, we decided, we three decided, if it's not an essential service and the person wants it, they can help pay, pay, pay for it too.
And one thing on your calcium, that, that cap that that creates, it would, it would lessen the effect of your dust control if that cap were to be graded all the time. If every time the road grader would go by there and, and stir that up, it would degrade or, or lessen the effect that you put it down there for.
That's what they don't do.
So that's why they don't, they don't grade it intentionally to get the benefits that you paid for, so then they gotta come back and do it.
Steve, I think you said that the road department was the major part of your budget?
That's correct.
And you said the second part was the law enforcement?
That's correct.
In the last six years, I'd like for you to tell the group here how much that jail has brought income into the general fund in the last six years. I believe it's over six million dollars, right?
I, I don't know.
I think, I think it was reported six point three?
Yeah, a little over three. On gross figures on what the income of, of the.
Okay, but the total in, total income was over six and actually three when it went to the coffers.
Well, the, the, the income from the jail, from housing outside county inmates, you know, Des Moines County, Pope County, Lynn County, you know, Johnson County here recently, they'll come down, they'll, they'll, they'll house them in the jail. And exact figures I, I can't come up with right now, but it's a little over three million gross.
Gross.
Gross, okay.
And then we don't know what the, the net profit is because every one of those jail inmates has, eats a meal, thanks three every day, you know.
I think it's about twenty bucks a day, isn't it?
All the incidentals that go with that.
It's about twenty bucks a day.
The meals are fifteen thousand dollars a month alone.
Yeah.
And that's just the meal.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, okay, and.
You've got your medicine, I think it was roughly twelve thousand a month.
Okay, and what's the total income we're charging and receiving for housing them a day?
It's not figured by daily though, Bob.
Okay.
That's just county people, we're not talking about our county people.
We can get your number, Bob, but it's probably not available today, but we could work with Kelly and Sheriff.
Okay, but it's, I just trying to make sure that it's not all going out on the law enforcement, there's some coming in also.
That's going into the general fund as well.
So to follow up, where can we go, like is there a website or anything where we can look at hard numbers on our own time?
What kind of numbers are you looking for?
Like budgetary numbers, department of management.
It's on the back of your, your.
Okay.
And it explains a little bit more.
Yeah. Thanks. So when, so you said it's two more meetings before it's gonna affect, if that's correct? And it's open forum for a public council, don't you decide, so is there a point where we can come in and say, okay, this is what we're actually gonna do? Simply get all of these numbers? Is there a point where we come and say, well, this is what we're planning on doing? Can we get one last comment period, if that's that or not?
Actually, truthfully, we're gonna have one in, in our next meeting, is, is we have on our agenda, the first public hearing for our proposed budget.
And what is that, what does that mean?
Right now, we're gonna listen to it and start another meeting. This is a separate meeting we're having right now versus our regular meeting.
But if you don't know any different on these numbers today, when is that, that call, when you guys phone, get some of the needs to crunch that?
We know what we are asking as far as levy rates, we know that. We don't know what all the other numbers are from the rollbacks and things.
But really, that's probably a small tid compared to what these numbers are really, aren't they? And so you're saying it's gonna be pretty close to these numbers? I guess the missed first part, meaning what caused the, the, the.
You wanna answer, I want to know. This department revenue, they, they had to send things out.
Grab that right.
So what? They had to send it out.
Answer part of your question.
What, just property or, or some of the overall expenses and all?
Well, it's jumped from twenty percent on some of those, on some of those figures, just on some of those figures, seventeen to twenty percent.
So the problem with this form is that they're, they're using hypotheticals. Did you see that it said it's based on a hundred thousand goes to.
Just like, like when accounting negotiates a contract, we throw out a big number, county comes back with a lower number and everything. Well, we figure somewhere in between, so that's what's gonna happen.
Well, it's all hypothetical.
Hypothetically, I could win the lottery next year.
So that's what, basically, let's talk to your legislators, why didn't they make us print this thing and send it out to everybody? That's their, that was their knucklehead idea, not ours, to confuse you guys, that wasn't our intention, that's legislators. So they sent out things saying hypothetically, your taxes are gonna go up by twenty-five percent, of course you guys are gonna want them, I would too.
That's, that's based on real numbers that you come up with, I mean, they don't pull it out of thin air. I mean, when you look at the line for the school district.
Not the evaluations, the levy rate, the levy rate could be, the proposed levy rate is what they're asking for, the levy.
Right.
They're talking about your taxable value increasing by thirty thousand dollars on a commercial property. That you're, that, that's hypothetical. When you're starting to use hypothetical numbers, you're not gonna have an accurate number. You can't have an accurate number when you're using hypotheticals.
So if our evaluations go down, this will decrease then, correct?
Correct.
Cause I mean, I got a wife who's real estate, and she's seeing prices overall going down and the homes taking longer to sell.
Yeah.
And do we benefit from a decrease in our taxes at that point?
Absolutely, if residential values start selling for more than we have them assessed at, we will lower the assessed value, therefore lowering your taxable value.
But that's a year in the rear.
But we're not seeing that in our office. I see every G O B that comes through, I don't know what your wife's looking at, but I'm telling you, everything sells for a hell of a lot more than we have it assessed at. And that's why we have to keep increasing.
Key properties that are, that are being fixed will always sell a lot more than what they're assessed at.
Everything sells for a lot more than it's assessed at.
And you're required, as, as the assessor, you're required to be in a ten percent window on that evaluation for what it, it actually sold at.
Correct.
Otherwise, they get dinged.
So that's how that works though, on the residential, if, when I do a sales ratio study, if, if the entire county went, and it looks like we're at, we were at ninety percent, we need to be closer to a hundred percent in market, we gotta increase the assessed value by that ten percent. So you're gonna get an assessment, not saying, let's use hypothetical numbers, it was a hundred thousand, now it's a hundred and ten thousand, okay? But you don't know what the rollback is gonna do, the rollback, you might be paying on, so you're paying on forty-seven percent of your assessed value today. But next year you might be paying on thirty-eight percent of that assessed value. So your taxable value doesn't follow your assessed value.
Can you explain the rollback to, I don't think they understand the rollback side of that.
So, so that's what we're talking about, for, just, let's just talk about residential class, cause commercial is totally different. Every class has a different rollback, commercial never adjusts, residential will adjust. So if the entire, they can't increase, the state of Iowa has a, a rollback so that your taxable value doesn't increase by more than three percent year over year. Right, across the entire state, doesn't mean that your individual tax dollars are gonna be, you know, you might, depending on what you did, if you put in addition on, there's a lot of factors that go into this, but that, that rollback is set so that your taxable value doesn't go through the rug. So if you see my assessed value went up twenty percent, a lot of people assume that that means their taxes are going up twenty percent. It doesn't mean that, because that rollback, you could be paying on a less, lesser percentage of that assessed value. I mean, we saw it happening from the, what, the rollback before was fifty-eight and it went down, it dropped to forty-seven or whatever, right? So when I, when I had increased values in, in twenty-three, we were up twenty percent residential. And your taxes didn't, you paid your taxes, it didn't go up twenty percent. This, you know, when you're paying your taxes for twenty-three this year, you should have saw that, that's what that rollback does. It, it prevents your inflation, it, it prevents inflation of your property taxes.
Right, but. Right, but when they put that, they put that as a cap. And a lot of counties now that weren't reaching that cap are now using that as a floor.
Well, there's, now you're talking two different things there, because now you're talking about growth. You're talking about they're capping your growth.
Is that not what we're talking about?
Well, the rollback doesn't, they're two different things. The, the growth is one thing, the rollback adjusts so that your taxable value on residential just don't go through the rug.
Right.
The new law with the three percent growth thing is, we're, we're just kind of, that's pretty new and we're still, I don't know why they would do that. That, that legislation is completely ridiculous. Why they're stunting growth in small rural Iowa is beyond me. Talk to your legislators is what I say. It's, it's the dumbest thing I've ever seen.
Well, it was to prevent some of these big low cows from, you know, they were doing five or, you know, whatever, they were doing.
Well, when you're looking like he said, in Dallas County, they grow by a billion dollars. If they don't change their levy, they're still, their revenues can double, you know? So yeah, I mean, so they should focus on this, but they, they don't realize when they pass laws that we don't live in Des Moines.
Right.
That's what they're, that's the problem. They, they base it on these big areas that are seeing this huge growth. You know, when we have maybe fifteen new houses in Henry County last year, we didn't see a new subdivision go in like Dallas County, you know?
But we still have to buy the same dump truck or same road grader.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Can you explain, um, the levy, like you explained, the general basic versus the supplemental and kind of why the supplemental went up, but the general basic is staying the same or actually went down a little bit, right?
Well, on general basic, we're obviously given a direction from House File seven eighteen. So they're gonna tell us when that levy should be for general basic on a year-to-year basis. So eventually, the theory is, as Nathan was saying earlier, is to get us down to that three fifty. So at some point between now and twenty twenty-nine, that's the goal. But when you look at the supplemental fund, that's totally different. Again, it kind of goes back to the point you're all making here. Now, what we're really seeing from an increase there is just because of what we see from insurance aspect for the most part. So obviously, we have health insurance that went up fairly significantly. It's about ten percent of our total budget, two point two five million dollars roughly. Um, it kind of gets back to the conversation about having some skin in the game and trying to reduce some costs by getting employees to be able to participate in those premiums. Uh, the other side of that is about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for our ICAP insurance, right, Robin? So again, that takes care of our liability throughout the county. Um, so it's a fairly significant amount of money that we're dealing with here. So, you know, two point seven five million dollars roughly overall, and that just continues to go up. Last year our premiums went up about, was it thirty percent significantly? So that's driving what we see in the supplemental side of the business unfortunately.
So I think too, as being part of those conversations, it's really interesting when the insurance guy comes in and explains what is happening and I think we can all relate. And then like.
Companies?
Excuse me, what was that?
Do we have alternatives for other insurance companies to deal the same cost?
Um, it's somewhat limited, right, Robin? To that, that perspective, they have to be approved through the state and certified?
Sure. Thirty percent.
It'll be, it'll be interesting to see what the California fires do to the insurance. I retired four years ago and from the insurance industry and did the insurance for the county. Number one, I'm tired of the insurance guy getting blamed for it.
But. This was his fault, just to do it.
But, uh, yeah, those costs keep going up. Uh, and the derachos in Iowa, the hailstorms and all of those things have a significant impact on the insurance companies. And when you're dealing with municipalities, there are a very limited number of carriers that can do that, for one thing. And these guys are obligated to look at the financial ratings, the stability of those carriers. Because many years ago, prior to ICAP being formed, insurance companies failed. And they couldn't meet the claim demands that the counties had. So they, they're under the microscope when they're looking at those things. And that's about all I can say about that, except a reminder, don't blame the insurance guy.
We have looked at ICAP as by far the best.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, they are.
And to answer your question a little more specifically, just recently, you've all heard about all the, the things that are happening with, within the IT industry and you've seen all kinds of things come across your phones and your computers. And we upgraded our insurance there as well because we need to be covered as a fairly significant increase in cost. So again, just security aspect from a cyber look is, is fairly significant.
Question two, the question's, Tom, your first, then the other one?
Um, yeah, on health insurance wise, I don't know if it's against law or what, does Henry County, like Des Moines County, you got a family plan and a, and a single plan? On the, people that have to file a single plan, do they get money back that, because they were in Des Moines County? And it's, I always saw it as a joke, they would give the people on a single plan the, the extra money and they would take it and invest it.
Short, quick answer, no.
Okay, that's why I didn't, that's why I haven't checked in Henry County.
That's a great deal though.
Okay, oh, yeah.
You should be there.
It's not.
No, no question.
The, the, the taxable value on something, let's just say somebody puts up a building and the county comes in and says, well, your building valued at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and, you know, you say, well, I've only got a hundred and ten in the construction. You know, and so it's like, so I'm being taxed because the county says the value says it's worth, you know, four hundred thousand, three hundred, whatever, when I only actually paid a hundred and ten, a hundred, whatever it may be.
You can appeal that.
Yeah, we don't have any buildings like that. We use the, the Iowa State Manual for pricing and it's pretty accurate. So, uh, if you were to get something, if something like that were to happen, obviously you wanna get ahold of our office. And we'll come out and look at the building and we don't have any. I wouldn't think.
Yep, Bob?
Yeah, in reference to the insurance guy defending them, yesterday we were told that our insurance in Iowa is not going to be doubled just because of California. Calif, it was explained to us, California has their own pool.
Wars went up because of the tornadoes went through last year though.
Oh, yeah.
In Iowa.
Oh, yeah.
In Iowa.
We've got our own destruct.
Point of information, I'll, I'll tell you this personally, the little insurance agency in Sweetburg, Iowa, State Mutual, okay? And it was, if you take the percentage of the, what the income was and according to the reserves, was the most profitable insurance company in the state of Iowa. They've, they've, I've been told this, they had to, they were forced to sell out because they knew if one big storm came through, it would wipe all the reserves and they could not afford to keep raising the rates. And this company had been in effect over a hundred and fifty years.
Yeah, mostly, if I could add to that, Mark, mostly what you're talking about is property losses. Has nothing to do with the litigation that municipalities face today and the cost of defending lawsuits that come against it. So, I mean, it's a big deal.
So when you have your next meeting, you will have it in a bigger room with a timeframe that everybody knows. And also, like, maybe, uh, how to, uh, might not interrupt somebody else who's speaking type thing. Kind of some general guidelines for people.
Sounds like a great suggestion.
And you'll publish it?
Yes.
Any other question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, do we still have COVID money in the Henry County? It's been spent?
It's allocated, not spent, but allocated.
Oh, allocated.
And as Chad said, the last of that went to the conservation department to help support and fund what we do down there.
So it's just allocated? They haven't been, it hasn't been given to them?
The project is in the engineering stage and, and waiting on concrete tanks and things like that.
It's in process.
Hadn't been paid out.
I know, I know they've been working on.
Yeah.
But the law said it had to be allocated.
Right.
Does that answer it?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. If you want to stay over for a next meeting, you're welcome.
Thank you.